Okay, call meeting order, please rise to pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is approve the agenda and couple additions under number one, item C, St. Clair County Road Commission in regards to 26 Mile Road.
What's this, I'm sorry, this is one C would it be?
One C, yes.
Do you have a copy of that for us?
Yes. Oh, maybe that's just a communication.
What do you mean, we're not gonna communicate?
Well, we just got it yesterday. And under two G, Trident Insurance Services.
No, but we have now FYIs.
They couldn't copy the one we need.
All right, if there's no other additions to the agenda, I'll make a motion that the agenda be approved with the two additions.
Move and supported to approve the agenda as amended, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of May the first.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the May first 2012 general meeting.
Support?
Move and supported to approve the minutes for the May first regular meeting, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Opposed, abstaining?
One.
One abstaining. Motion carries. Hang on, I'm looking for the special meeting minutes.
I got one. I got it.
Go for it, we got it. She can't, where?
Right there, there in your right hand.
No, I gave them.
I know they're here. The next item is approve the minutes for the special meeting of Thursday, May 24th.
I moved it through the meeting.
Six minutes of that meeting.
Moved and supported.
Dan made the motion, Colleen supported?
Yes.
Uh, I guess the only thing I would ask, you think we should include in that motion? We looked at the bids and we did approve to hire Mr. Tuma and put his, are we ready in the motion?
No.
No?
No.
Isn't, isn't that in the minute, or it's not in the minutes?
It's not in the minutes, that's why I asked.
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
If it's not in the minutes, it's, we can move to amend the minutes, I think, after.
Well, you can always do that, but it wasn't part of the motion, apparently, so.
It wasn't part of the motion, so.
Okay, well, let the minutes, let the minutes reflect tonight that. Mr. Tuma's rate is $150 an hour. And if you look through the archives someday, you'll see it in the minutes from tonight. So it's moved and supported to approve the minutes for the special board meeting of May the 24th, any discussion?
Now, how do you want that $150 per hour recorded in the minutes?
We'll just say that under minutes for the special meeting, it was discussed and tonight's meeting would reflect that Mr. Tuma was hired at a rate of $150 an hour.
Wouldn't we want to do this motion to approve the minutes as corrected with the addition of that?
Well, if it wasn't in the motion, though, then that's not anything.
What motion?
This motion.
If it wasn't in the motion, we did not say.
Oh, I see, at the time, we didn't.
Yeah, right.
I mean, you could've added it to the, you could've added to the minutes, but not added to the motion.
Right.
That was my question. This'll handle. Okay, it's moved and supported, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
One abstaining. Motion carries. The next item is the financial report and when we turn this over to Colleen, you'll notice on the table in front of you is a revised copy of the first page. Colleen, please.
And there's a reason for that, we began the month with $114,921.94 in the general fund, took in receipts of $76,857.36, made dispersments of $23,557.52, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $168,221.78.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report as accepted or presented.
Move and supported to accept the financial report as presented, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is number one correspondence, item A, the St. Clair County Road Commission. Everybody got a copy and early in the spring, they said that we would not be charged dispatching fees. Couple months ago, they said you are, then they said you weren't, so we finally got a letter saying, we don't know, we'll let you know. So, it's kind of up in the air.
How, how do they think that we're going to form a budget based on?
Well, the other supervisors were great because they already budgeted it for limestone and stuff. And then somebody started a hot rumor that they weren't, they were gonna charge us.
So then everybody got an uproar and then said, no, no, we're not gonna charge you, well, then we get this saying, we don't, we don't want to charge you, but we'll let you know.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's kind of gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, item B, William Kaufman, invitation to host the Board of Commissioners meeting. It came after our last regular meeting. It was supposed to be in before this meeting. I know last year I was at the meeting when this was discussed and the board decided not to do it. And it's an election year and maybe I could've done it at the special board meeting, but I didn't want to, I guess, because it was a special meeting. So I guess what I'd like to do, because we're too late for this year, but if you're so inclined to, you can do it by resolution, whatever, saying if we get one next year, that we'll be more than happy to host it.
Yeah, I think that'd be nice.
Because as far as scheduling goes, nobody knows what, even a month ago, nobody can be positive what their schedules are. They're all on Thursday and like.
Oh, I know, and I know I'm out of town on the, the week of the 19th and 6th, I can do it in September.
Well, we're done for this year.
We're done for the, you mean for next year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
2013, okay. Okay, make a motion or a resolution?
Well, you can make a motion that if we receive an invitation next year, then we will respond to invite them.
Okay, I make a motion, if we receive in 2013 an invitation from the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to host, to host a Board of Commissioner meeting at Casco Township that will look favorably into doing so.
Support it. Okay, move and supported, I'm not gonna repeat it, you know what he said. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, item C, under correspondence, we got this yesterday. And this is the bridge work they're gonna do on 26 Mile Road over the Marsete drain. Work is scheduled to begin the week of June 4th. Work will include removing the entire existing superstructure, rebuilding the abutments, replacing the superstructure guardrail, and completing some road repair. The road approaches will then be resurfaced and the pavement markings will be repaired. Now, they previously told us to anticipate 12 weeks for this job. They have signs up that are gonna be like portable red lights that are.
Yep, already up.
Yeah, and they're already up.
Well, but yesterday, somebody said they were displaying, or today, somebody said they were displaying yellow.
They weren't even flashing at all, when I went by.
They were flashing yellow today when I went by.
Says this project is financed by the St. Clair County Road Commission, the State of Michigan, and the Federal Highway Administration at a total cost of $441,826.22. The completion date is scheduled for August 21st, August 31st.
Okay, and where is the bridge exactly, Ring City and what, Beethe?
It's between Beethe and Church.
Okay.
Where the Marsete Creek crosses.
Turn on the bridge and putting a couple tubes in, right?
Now, I'm not sure what the finished product, but according to them, they said superstructure, so I'm anticipating for $441,000 to put the bridge back.
Oh, okay.
So, but they're gonna do half of the time and leave the road open, but they'll use the red lights to regulate traffic. Okay, moving on, new business, item A, agreement with North Point Development LLC. This has been going on for like nine years and we had two pro, or two businesses over there had the same problem. So we came to an understanding with the first business, the board approved it. I approached Mr. Evans with the same offer and he returned it to us. So right now, we currently should have no hoop style buildings in the commercial. If anyone puts one up, we're not gonna wait eight years to talk to them, hopefully. So, but if you don't have an agreement, if you talk to the next guy, then they say, what about the last guy? And we say, okay. So, the buildings, the hoop itself probably isn't worth $2,000 and certainly it would be problematical at best to take legal action and it would certainly cost 10 times more than the building is worth. Plus, it would hurt if there is any good faith on either side. So I bring it to the board tonight, hoping that you will approve this agreement.
So.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported, just a little additional information, the first agreement, Mr. Alexander gave us the, it was two pages with him, he gave us 17 bucks to record it. Mr. Evans did not give us the $14, so as part of your motion, it's understood that the township's gonna record these and it will cost us $14. Any other discussion?
Well, that's kind of not fair to Redline.
Well, we're the ones that want to record.
Yeah, well, then we should give Redline the money.
I offered him that option and he said, no, he wouldn't do it.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I told him we would handle it and he said, no, no, it's gonna be, I said, okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the agreement with North Point Development, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Item B is informational, it kind of shows the calculations for this year, the increase amount. And it's approximately, what? What was it?
40.
2% or something, it's like $1,580 from last year.
Oh, increase?
Excuse me?
Increase.
Yes.
2.29? Is that 2.29?
Apparently. And basically, the reason was our average number of runs is up a little bit. Now, if you look at the number of runs, they're actually down from the year before. But the fifth year of the five-year cycles, the one that dropped off is only 41. So, even though we had less than the year before, our average still went up a little bit, so that's the increase we got. We don't have the finished product for the city. I met with the fire chief and the city manager, went over it. I had one thing I wanted him to address in the contract and he's gonna run it by his lawyer and get back to me. And there's one other thing we may be discussing, and then we'll get a finished product for the board to vote on. So, the language in the current contract is not clear as to the area they cover in section 24. And I want that clarified, it's not changing anything, but it's not in there.
Why is it section 24?
Well, because if you look at the IRA contract, it says they do 25 through 36 and a portion of 24. And it doesn't stipulate what portion. The Richmond contract does not say, even say 24. So, because that's where Purge Point is.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Okay, so I called IRA and they said they do the south half of that square mile.
Okay.
So I told the city manager that since this is the way we've always done it, I would like the contract to stipulate that they do the north half of that square mile, because if you look at our original contract, it says 1 through 23.
So they're gonna do from basically the backside of Purge Point's property, IRA Township, southward?
That's IRA, and north half is Richmond. And that's the way they've been doing it for years, but the wording isn't in the contract.
Do you have a street address right where the demarcation line's gonna be?
They'll work, they got it, don't worry. Uh, the other thing was the fire chief said that they're getting new directives from state authorities as far as first responders and calls, he said it's been in place two months, he hasn't noticed a change in calls. So I may want to even look at that with them and say, you know, if our calls jump wildly, that we may want to, you know, reopen the contract to negotiate if it's gonna do crazy things to our costs.
So this would be the northeast and northwest quarter of section 24?
The whole half, the whole northern half.
The two quarters?
Yep.
Quarters.
And they always did it, but the language isn't in there.
Right.
So, they didn't have a problem with that.
The folks right on the line, you know, they said, well, their, IRA's coming then, now, now Richmond.
Well, normally, IRA goes to 28. But I've had people on the north side of 28, which is Richmond, call for a, for Richmond for a burn permit and they send them to IRA, even though it's Richmond's area, so.
How much, um, just for a pressure, how much we charge our roads or our fire runs?
I think that's, got different prices. For, for medical, it's $50. For fire, it's $250. And that's it.
Is that posted on our website?
No, it's.
I don't think so.
Is that somewhere we do, we get posted on our website?
What's that?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'll put it up there.
Yeah, good. Cause, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
So when they get the language clarified, will you get it all hashed out, then we'll bring it back and you can make a decision on it.
Okay, so that's table in it?
Yep, it's just for information, because we don't actually have, if you look at the contract that's in there, it's dated back. It's not dated, having from today, so.
And we've been having good luck with Richmond, City of Richmond.
Right, I talked to Karen, she said she didn't have any problem with anything. It'll probably be a three-year contract, as they usually are, for some reason, last year, we just did a one-year. But before that, we always did three-years.
We did five.
It's five and date, if you look at the language, but if you really read it, it was three.
Really?
Yeah, it was dated 2006, but it wasn't really signed till 2008 and it ran out in 2011.
Yeah, that's Karen, Karen drove her feet so much.
Well, but I asked that too, I said, sure it wasn't five, he said, no, it was three. It just took that long to get through the process. So, don't anticipate a problem, so we'll see. Item C, parking lot bids. Uh, I think I kind of updated you before that, you know, I talked to some folks that were very knowledgeable about whether we could, you know, seal the parking lot. Tom Cameron, the area foreman, who used to run a blacktop business, he said, you're wasting your money to seal the main parking lot because it's so bad with cobweb cracks, it's not gonna work. His recommendation was to repave the front, seal the back. So, he gave me the names of the two companies that do the work for the county. Uh, the bids are in here, one bid is pretty reasonable, actually, from Blue Water. So I was anticipating bringing this to you this summer, but then I was informed that a possible free repair job on the Lindsay Road Bridge is no longer gonna happen. So Mr. Clark hasn't got the numbers figured out yet and I'm sure it's gonna be considerable. So I guess, unless you want to go ahead, we could wait and get the numbers, we'll probably have them in 60 days, I would assume.
I'd say we wait, so.
Okay, on, on Blue Water, it's, the total would be the 4,000, 5,000, 370, 200, right?
Well, where are you looking at?
Right here.
Well, if you want an inch and a half on the whole lot, it's 4784.
I got you, okay.
If you want two inches, it's 5684.
Okay, and that's?
To seal the back lot and do the cracks is the 370 and the 200.
Okay, gotcha.
You'd want to do two inches.
He recommended it, I'd have to get with Tom again. The only thing is, they'd have to grind down this end of it so that you don't have a two-inch step. And even, that was included in that.
Okay.
So, that was reasonable. Okay, so we'll just put that on hold till we see what's going on with the bridge.
So you wanted to say that it's table, move, reconsider it next month?
Yeah, I don't know, if you love a motion, you can make a motion, otherwise, we'll just.
I mean, how late in the season, I mean, they could do it almost until snow flies, can't they?
Right.
And I didn't ask them for a drop dead date or anything, and I could, I suppose, but I'm sure they'll be, if you told them by Labor Day, that would still give them a two-month window. So, I don't think that would be a problem. Yeah, worst case, if it is, well, next year's around the corner. So, but the one price was considerably less than the other.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, item D. Okay, included in your packet were some court papers from Rondigo. We have some more here for you. Basically, the planning commission turned down Rondigo for a special land use last August. Uh, Rondigo immediately appealed in Port Yorn, but they never served us with the papers. So that went on from last August till May the 21st, Rondigo had to show cause to the judge why he shouldn't throw it off the dock and be gone. At that time, they said, oh, they served the papers and they set a date for yesterday to hear the matter. So they served us last, we got it in the mail a week ago today. So contacted our attorney, he got all the papers done, took them to the court, served Rondigo. Yesterday, the attorney and I went to court and Rondigo did not show up. Okay, so the judge dismissed the appeal with prejudice. Uh, Mr. Dubay said, you know, our cost would probably be at least $1,000 for this adventure and the judge gave us $400. Okay, then tonight, when we walked in, this was on the fax machine and apparently, Rondigo has filed again yesterday, I assume, but we have not been served yet. So, hopefully, the judge will throw it out, because he did dismiss it with prejudice and it's just, you know, the ongoing adventure.
When they say dismissed with prejudice, what does that mean?
That you can't come back.
You can't.
You gotta go to a higher court. If you're a defendant in a criminal case and they dismiss with prejudice, means you can't try for the crime again. So it's a done deal. So we shall see. Okay, item E.
Oh, that's fun.
We got a communication last week. And it said, you know, our records, you have not signed a letter of intent, and I never saw the letter of intent. But you can email, and it said, there's a letter attached to this, there was no letter attached to that. So the lady was on vacation, we found her, well, then she faxed us. I'm gonna have to dig for it.
Here, I, I got.
You got the one with the blank?
But hang on, they did.
Yeah. She did get us a letter. Does everybody have this one with the blanked out portion? Should be in there.
This, no, you know, here's the one you want.
Okay. This is, this is what she was.
Let me look.
No, this is what she's been attached.
This should've been attached to.
We just got that, when did we get that?
We got the original letter on May 16th from Mr. Friedling.
Yeah, and I got this the 31st.
Yeah, Patty just got this.
The 31st?
No, wait a minute, that wasn't it. Well, I just got it.
Well, it's not in your packet. I should've had it here on the table, but I don't see it for some reason.
You can read it to us.
I gotta apologize for that.
What's he looking for?
The one with the blanked out portion. I just wanted to make copies of that for you.
I don't know, Bill, today was a crazy day.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, today was audit day and, okay, here's what it says, this was the follow-up letter that we never got. Says, I understand that St. Clair County is submitting an application to update the Hazard Mitigation Plan adopted by the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners in 2005. I also understand that FEMA requires a signed statement of intent to participate from each jurisdiction in the county. Please be, please be advised that, and then they fill in, Casco Township will adopt the updated St. Clair County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Furthermore, we understand that we are invited to participate in the planning and decision-making process and notify you of our desire to do so. We further understand that if we do not adopt the county plan, that is our responsibility to develop our own plan to apply for hazard mitigation money. Please return this letter to St. Clair County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, blah, 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 by closing the day, June 18th. And that's the letter. So I called and I asked and a lot of it has to do with grant money. And so my question was if, as a group, you apply for grant money is, and we're a member, is there any chance that we're gonna have to ante up a portion of the matching grant money? And they said, absolutely not. And they mentioned one township, jeez, I can't remember which, but it's close, it's rural, that they went through the process and they had sirens for tornadoes in their township. I didn't get into specifics, did they, did they match 50%, 80% or whatever? So apparently, there's not a, a big negative involved, the part with the FEMA, probably gonna, you know, FEMA likes to make you do outfits and stuff. So, it probably would not hurt us to approve this letter and send it into them. Uh, if you want a minute, we can pass one around, we'll read it.
I, I got one.
I saw it before.
Yeah, I have it right here.
I know I wrote it before.
Was it in your packet or was it on the table?
I just gave it to you.
Oh, you had one?
Yeah. Um, this is for emergency management stuff, huh?
Yeah.
I wonder if it could be used, we have a bridge here that will not accept fire trucks right now, I wonder if that would.
But they have another route there, I don't think that would fly or everybody do it every time there was a bridge out. I think that's.
We're trying out.
Yeah, can't help but try.
Remember that list of names we gave you? Did you ever get that to Mr. White?
No, I haven't yet to get that.
Well, get that to him, I think this is kind of tied in with that.
Okay.
It's your emergency response and this is tied into it, like I mentioned, the tornado sirens, the one township. And I should remember the township, I'm not sure, so I'm not gonna say, but it's a rural township somewhere to ours. And he said, they utilized it by being a member for the sirens.
Probably, you think about it, I could hear Richmond's, but I imagine if you get hurt and, I mean, can you hear IRA Township there?
I never hear.
The tornado siren?
Yeah.
No. I mean, I don't even know when that, it went off.
Could you hear Richmond?
Yes, yeah.
It depends on the weather and the wind and everything else. You know, sometimes at noon, you can hear the blast from the fire siren in Richmond, but not every day. I can hear beep 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 on the trucks at the landfill on the right day, so, I don't know.
Do you need a motion?
I guess it would be good.
Just one more, that we sign the letter, since it will do no harm.
I'll support it.
Okay, move and supported to approve signing the letter and sending it to the county. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining, motion carries. Okay, moving on, the next is the assessor settlement agreement, we just got this from Mr. Tuma's office tonight. And, uh, our new attorney and our assessor came to this agreement with Golden Hawk last week. So I asked the assessor to check with Mr. Tuma to see if it needed board approval. She said she didn't think so, it's just information, but the thing we got on the fax tonight, sounds like approval. Okay, and basically, they're getting like, you know, 50% discount. But it was valued very, very high, Rattle Run was just sold for between $500,000 and $600,000, no golf course, Rattle Run. And these folks were assessed at something like 3.6. So, it's gonna cost us about $600 a year under the old millage, because the new millage hasn't kicked in yet. So it's gonna cost us about six hundred dollars a year under the old millage, because the new millage hasn't kicked in yet, and this goes back to two thousand nine. So it's gonna cost us around forty five hundred dollars for this, but.
But it's gonna keep the business viable in Casco Township.
And if not, they were gonna do a very expensive appraisal and go to the full tax tribunal in Lansing.
That would've been much.
Well, it would probably cost us twelve to twenty thousand dollars to go through that full-blown in Lansing.
So this is a small project.
So I talked to Pat Isler in Columbus, they went to the tri-fold tribunal over a golf course, it cost them twelve thousand dollars. Well, when you're going, you get a point seven seven mils, it's six hundred dollars a year, I mean, I feel bad for the schools, but they had a legitimate case. So, uh, by the language, it says, I'm seeking the board's approval of a negotiated settlement, blah, 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 blah. So it sounded like you'd like the board's approval.
I move that we approve the settlement, it's equitable, from what I understand, and also, uh, inserts our resources in the judge.
Support.
Going forward to that.
Okay. Moved and supported to approve the.
Who's supporting it?
I did.
Coming. The assessor settlement agreement with, uh, Golden Hawk Golf Course, any discussion? Hearing done, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Item G, which was added to the agenda today, our insurance representative was in. And we kinda went over the, uh, insurance package here, which I had tonight, and our insurance is gonna expire before our next regular meeting. The rates, I didn't mark it, I think it's second page from the end.
Yeah.
In the back, the total amount is seven thousand three hundred and six dollars per year, and it's approximately four percent more than last year. So the representative said, basically, it's a three-year agreement, but if you can turn aside, and we'll just approve it for the next year, because next year, you're gonna come back with another number, it probably won't be lower, he said, yeah, that's right. So, uh, if you make the motion to approve this, and it's still over a thousand dollars less than we were paying two years ago at Parkland. If you look from the front end on the third page, as part of your motion, you need to, uh, approve a signatory, either myself or the clerk, for that page, and it has to be sent in. Now, I think this is just a way to make some money, but the hundred sixty-three dollars for terrorism insurance, it's already included in the seven thousand three hundred. So I tried to pin them down, I want it two hour time, but I tried to pin them down, you know, well, what's the difference between kids having fun with terrorists, you know? And, uh, so I don't know.
Well, there's got to be a difference between vandalism and terrorism.
Depends if they're paying your policy property.
Says certified acts.
Yeah.
That would be the police would certify.
And I don't think, I don't think we're a target for terrorists, but.
Is there any possibility that something strange would happen on the freeway, given that we have this corridor from the bridge?
Yeah, could.
Well, and the only thing I was thinking of, if it was a large terrorist act, and it affected anything that we own, then, then it would apply, even if it didn't affect this hall exactly, we also have other properties. And, uh, Parkland.
It seems remote, possibility seems.
It's not real expensive for a hundred sixty-three dollars.
And we have, uh, liability coverage, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't, it seems very remote, and the price.
Okay, so we need a motion, if you're self-claimed, uh, to approve this at the seven thousand three hundred, whatever it was, six dollars, and to name either supervisor or clerk as signatory for the policy owner.
Who signed the verse, you mean?
I don't know, you can dig it out, but he said it would either be the supervisor and the clerk. He would like one or the other, maybe. So you can name either one or both.
Who signs our checks?
I do.
She does.
That's all.
Is the amount?
Two signatures?
Is the amount of seven thousand three hundred and six dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. I make the motion that we include Trident Insurance Services, um, um, policy for a total of seven thousand three hundred and six dollars, and have either, um, Supervisor Phil Rumnapp or, um, um, Clerk Pat Alagreen as the, uh, policy holder's signature.
So we are including terrorism coverage?
Yes, it's already included.
Well, if you don't, if you don't want it, you could, you could make a motion to, to that.
There was a reason that we didn't though.
That, that there was a reason you did.
I don't know for sure if that, was it in last year?
Yes, it was. There was a reason we didn't, last year, 'cause we included it last year, and I can't remember what it was, but there was a reason that we.
Decided to do that?
Yeah.
I don't remember either. I, I remember that we did, we talked about it, I don't, I don't remember the drift of the conversation.
Yeah, and I can't remember why we included it, though, we did include it, 'cause it's in our policy.
Okay.
And it's, and it's, it's a remote possibility, but these days in age.
Yes, I suppose if somebody took a.
Tanker.
Grudge against, no, a grudge against the township.
Okay.
And did something horrible, that could happen, but.
Okay, deals remote.
Well, the thing is saying that we could sign it, that's where I have to sign, it's on this terrorist case.
Do, in my motion, should I include along with the, um?
No, the one sixty-three is in your.
It's included. No, your, you, your motion is fine, you covered, you covered.
I have one question, what is inverse condemnation, is that when we do something that essentially is a taking, and the, and the, uh, folks that have the land nearby want, uh, want us to take it too because it's lost its value?
I don't know.
I think that's what it is, if that's the case, it doesn't seem like a whole lot.
How much is it, coverage?
Fifty thousand, something, four hundred thousand, I think it's three, I'm gonna take a look.
Well, I mean, just the whole policy is, uh.
I don't know.
There's ambitions and liability, basically.
Where are you seeing that?
It's on page, it's on, I think, the fourth page, under Public Officer's Liability, Miscellaneous Description, Inverse Condemnation, and a non-monetary defense, defense limit, which I'm not sure what that is either, I'm puzzled about that one.
Okay, well, Bill, how come you didn't answer?
'Cause the list is about fifty.
No, stay with through every bit of this.
I think that's when, um, I don't think that's gonna happen, I guess I'm not so worried about that.
Okay.
If we condemn a property for eminent domain, in the proper name, that's I think what it means, and the property next door loses all of its value because of what we've done, they can, a person can petition the township to compensate.
Compensate the property damage.
And condemn that property too, so, I, I, I think that's what it means.
Well, I can get ahold of.
At first, I thought it wasn't enough, but I, I think it's plenty, given, you know, if you think about it, it's unlikely to happen, we're not, and we're not exercising any eminent domain or condemning any properties for that.
Can't see where, even, even.
No, I, it's, that's not gonna happen.
Our properties, I couldn't see.
Unlikely anyway.
Okay, is, is anyone here to support?
I'll support it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the insurance coverage with Trident Insurance Services for seven thousand three hundred and six dollars. And you named both of us?
Yeah.
Neither one.
And either William Rumnapp or Pat Alagreen.
Yes.
To be the signatory. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing done, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, the next item is under Old Business Hall Repairs, I had something to hand to here, but.
It's my stuff.
It was here, it was here when I started.
Yeah.
They're all over the map.
Well, yeah. I don't know, it was here before the meeting started, hang on a minute, I'll take a quick look. It was that bidding list.
Oh, the scope of work, Patty's got it on the back of her, this thing.
Yeah, but there, that wasn't the.
That wasn't yours.
The one Mr. Uplager put on there wasn't the last.
They updated it in the best.
Yeah.
These are my papers.
Are there supposed to be another one?
No.
What, no, on the last page, there, you see that fifteen items?
Yeah.
Okay, well, in the last edition, and I know Mr. Uplager had it, the first two were bid, number fifteen was changed to replace the five-quarter boards, which are the floor, as needed, well, it is bid, and both bids indicate that we replace them all. So I ran some copies of the updated list, but, uh.
Are they on your desk?
No, I had them all here before, I don't know if it got shuffled into this stuff. But the only difference was number fifteen.
So in other words, he added an additional work to replace all the boards as part of fifteen, he didn't exclude it, says with the exception of.
Number fifteen, now keep reading.
Yeah, and then he included the replacement of all those boards.
Yes.
It's unbeatable, isn't it? The other guy wants, what, forty-seven hundred dollars?
Yeah, I don't know if he's getting tired of bidding, or.
Or just doesn't want the job, doesn't wanna mess with the debt.
Or, I can't believe that Mark can do it for eighteen hundred.
He does good work, at least he's experienced.
Well, after I got, after I got the bid, I called him.
Yeah.
And, uh, confirmed that, yeah, that was the deal, and, uh.
They don't have it.
It was laying right here, it must've got mixed in. But the only difference was number fifteen. Because Mr. Henninger came out and looked at it, and he said, instead of fixing a selected few, I would probably replace them all, and he returned it.
There you go.
Okay, so, um.
So I, I faxed, I sent one of these to both individuals.
Trade mark's bid?
No.
Here you go.
Mine's a workshop.
Do I want one, two, Brenda? I got another one. There are two there.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, when the two gentlemen were out here looking at the work, we also discussed possibly a handicap entrance for the front. And I gave them my best Casco spiel about, uh.
Plaque.
You know, any donations are a hundred percent tax deductible, and if you, if you do it, do it for free, we'll give you a plaque. And they said.
Mentioned in public knowledge.
Then I said, a really big plaque for the entrance, 'cause you're looking at twenty grand. So I called Mr. Uplager today to verify his bid here, and he asked me, do I get a plaque?
I'll buy a plaque.
So if the board has no objection, I'm gonna have, probably have Denise Page make, you see this red thing here? I'll probably make something up to that effect that, you know, the work on the township hall was completed by a Casco resident, Mr. Mark Uplager, and with appreciation, and put it up someplace outside.
Yes, I would hope.
No.
Not that red.
You wanna get that?
The walk of appreciation, the Casco walk.
Well, it's up to the board, let them get the work done, we'll discuss it.
Yes.
So, uh, but anyway, I told both people that, you know, free is a plaque.
No.
A really big plaque.
I'm not quite sure I get this, is he gonna do it for eighteen hundred, gonna do it free?
No.
Then why would he get a plaque for eighteen hundred?
Well.
Cause it's a lot lower than the other guy.
Yeah, well, what he should do, I mean, it would seem if he, if he wants the deduction, he would quote it for what he really thought it would cost, and then, uh, donate part of it, I've been, done, done that.
Maybe he didn't wanna get into that.
But can you, could you take that off, could you put that on your taxes as a charitable contribution?
Yeah, I checked with the auditor last, two months ago, that any contribution to the township is taxied up.
Sure.
So I throw that in the spiel.
Really? Cause I stitched together that.
As long as it's reasonable and verifiable, I don't have a problem with it.
And I, I could mention that to him.
I hope one of them's out there.
If you wanna word a bid for the cost, items one through fifteen on this.
No idea.
Not to, not to exceed eighteen hundred, and before he ever, you know, does a thing, I'll make triple sure, you know, I did call, that there's no misunderstanding, 'cause that's the last thing I want, so, but I told him that the work on the handicap ramp had to be done before the August election, because there's some boards up there that are not safe to walk on.
Right.
And, uh, he said he understood that, so.
And I wouldn't wanna, Mr. Mark, they're just barely getting by.
A lot of contractors are not getting by anymore.
Well, he bid the work, I didn't tell him what to do.
You know, no, but I'm not gonna make him do it for free, I'm sorry.
But because it wasn't free, I was going with a plastic plaque.
Oh, oh, come on, a plastic plaque.
We'll discuss.
Or give by a launch at least.
We'll dis, well, the trouble with plaques are, you give one to one person, another people.
Then they all want them.
Well, why didn't you give one to them, why didn't you give one to them?
Well, that's why.
You know, that's the problem you run into, you don't wanna, you don't wanna slight anyone that's either given time or whatever of themselves to the township.
I like that certificate.
I can do certificates for minimal.
You can always, if you have them, you can always put them in the closet.
Right, I can do them quickly.
How many you want, I got about fifty of them home.
Bring them in.
They're all filled up, my name, though.
You made the promise of the plaque, we'll go with.
Well, that was for the free, but he did ask me, when I called to verify, he said, do I get a plaque?
I think you must do a plaque.
So apparently, he remembered that, yes.
I knew that we approved this, uh, quote from our later construction, from trademark.
Trademark.
I'll support it.
It's irresistible.
Moved and supported. Yes, you want the price in the motion, correct?
And it included the, in, in the list that was provided with the quote.
A roll call.
Yeah, I think.
Do you support?
As soon as I get the motion.
Okay.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the proposal, proposal of trademark destruction for work on the township hall, items one through fifteen, for a cost not to exceed eighteen hundred dollars, so, right? And we have a roll call vote.
Okay. Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Hannah? Aye. Dan?
Aye.
And Joe?
Yes. Casco resident, too.
And congratulations to Mr. Uplager and his wife for their, um, daughter Corinne, who graduated in Richmond High School's top ten.
Really?
Is headed off to college on a scholarship, bright girl, lovely, lovely Casco Township resident.
Good, we've heard that stuff.
We agree.
Okay, moving on, next item is payment of the bills.
Any questions?
I make a motion that we, um, um, pay the bills.
I like it. Support?
Moved and supported to pay the bills, is there any discussion? Hearing done, we have a roll call vote.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Me?
Yeah.
Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments, you got.
Yes, since the, uh, there.
The weather is too nice, everybody's busy, have anything to say, Sidney? A couple of things to touch base on, uh, just like to thank Bob Gore, who donated his time to put all our new exit signs up. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we got all lit ones.
Well. Don't get carried away, 'cause he's coming back to work out of the luck, uh, but we appreciate his efforts.
Right.
You guys want all that FYI information in your pack?
No, I don't.
Um, I found some of it quite interesting, actually.
Okay, good.
I don't want to claim to see it enough, actually, I don't wanna break the bank with the printing, printing costs.
Well, but if you wanna know what's going on in the stuff that comes into the township, because you're not in here every day.
I'd like to see it, I got another question, I mean, I have a question about it, there was a group that's going to proselytize in the township, why do they want us to sign something regarding their presence? I don't think they need that, is there an underlying liability issue that they're concerned about, or what?
I think when, they just more or less want to, uh, inform you that they're gonna be there, so if you get some calls, you say, yeah, I know they're here.
Why do they want, I, I, that's good.
Yeah.
But why do they want us to certify, uh, with a signature that they notified us, I don't really understand.
In most places, they probably do have to.
The liability thing about it, if this is, sometimes it's unusual, when they talk about the young people that are concerned, because sometimes, I don't know if it's this group, but I know booksellers and such like that, they'll bring. Sometimes, I don't know if it's this group, but I know booksellers and such like that, they'll bring them into the township with a vehicle, and they will drop them off, and these young people are walking up and down these roads. You know, you, white shirts, khaki pants, God love 'em, you know, hard-soled shoes, and they're going door to door. And maybe it's a liability issue for the young people themselves, that they have to be, the township has to be aware that, you know, they're not...
I don't agree if it's a, if it's a, an indirect liability to us to certify that in some way we're aware of them, 'cause, but we don't provide protect, police protection services.
No, but we, but we do answer the phone when somebody says...
Oh, we need to know.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's good to know, but why do we need to certify that we've been notified?
They've never been asked before.
And return a document to them with a supervisor's signature, I don't get it.
I think it's just because they want to make sure that we were notified and we did read it, and we do know.
If someone asks, does the township know that you're doing this, they can say yes, because they have a...
In a lot of communities, they have an ordinance not allowing it. So by doing that, it precludes...
I mean, not allowing, uh...
That's a good explanation, actually.
Can you have... Is that, is that solicitation? Does that block freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, freedom of whatever?
St. Clair Shores, you can't even mow guys' lawn and get paid for it without a license from the city. So I'm sure that there are communities that...
Is some community, then, any kind of coming to the door? I mean...
I mean, that's such an outdated thing to begin with, especially in rural areas.
Well, I don't think they tell you you can't do it, but what they tell you is you have to register with the city, so they know who's out there. Okay? And I think that's probably tailed into this somehow.
Maybe.
But they don't hurt anybody, no more than anybody else.
Oh, I don't have a problem with them doing it.
They have a right to do it, so...
But I just have, I'm just curious, what is under, under liability?
Well, it's gotta be liability, you know, it's gotta be...
But is it our liability or theirs?
It must be theirs.
Yeah, but nowhere does it say...
'Cause we're the one that's signing, not them.
Yeah, but you don't sign that you're giving them permission to do it.
No, we just acknowledge that they signed it.
Yeah, that's it.
I don't know.
I'll let you borrow my dogs when we come next time.
Well, and I, I did tell them when they called that, I'm not sure how wise a thing this is, we have long stretches between driveways and big dogs up those driveways, so, you know, whatever you think, people. Daniel went into the lion's den, I guess they can send these kiddos into Casco.
It can't be any worse than going into, like, Target Detroit.
No, 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 it can't, but it's, it just isn't a, I don't think it's the same thing to do in this day and age of people's...
You gotta be dedicated to do it, no doubt about that.
And it's good to be with someone when you're doing it, not doing alone.
And I, and I don't know if that's the case, because when I see people walking along the road, and I just know by the way they're dressed that that's what it is, they're by themselves.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a friend in high school who went down south and sold bibles all through the south.
Well, there used to be a young man that sold, uh... Textbooks.
Oh, yeah.
Remember the blue textbook, that guy? Yeah.
There's a fellow down the street from us that walks a lot and does survey.
I'm surprised you don't own them, 'cause...
I've only seen them alone, I mean, and not like the other groups of people who come in a car with four and children and such like that. I've seen, and I, you, you know, because they've got khakis and a white shirt on, and they're carrying something, and you're going, oh, gee, there's a long stretch down there.
Witnesses come occasionally to the house.
Well, I can name by name, they always...
You even won't link them?
Oh, yep, but even the Mormons on their missions, they usually have two people together.
Yeah, and I would hope that they do, you know? I would hope that they do.
Oh, well, just for information.
All right, I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand and adjourn. I was gonna say, there's nobody here from the N E M C representative, 'cause they're not here, so...